I think it's Illinois for that now.
Wrong, Bill?
About the insurance.
Yes, yeah. Wait, sir. I got the request. Is there a reply?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, we changed the policy and reduced our contract.
Oh, yeah, I did see that, yeah, yeah. That's a no-brainer.
Yeah. Oh, I forgot to, look, you were on the road. I just wanted to put it out. But essentially, we were requesting for the good summary or cool summary or whatever it is that you have. I just have to make sure.
The current year.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, sure, okay.
I like not being the new guy anymore.
So, so scantily. He says he likes not being the new guy anymore, and I said, "So, I bet you do, too." You're not the new guy. That's why I said, "You're not the new guy."
Yep.
Order is, yes. Recorder's on. I got you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. It is 3:00 P.M. on Thursday, December 1st, 2016. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors. We have a quorum. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of flag and country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have a noise-making device similar to this, personally, you put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you wish to speak to the board, there are forms near the door which will be given to the manager, who's gonna hold up his hand at this time. Now, before we start with that, we have several duties to take care of. The first is an oath of office for Ms. Margaret Feinberg. Margaret, Antoni, are you going to administer?
I will, and I'll have to notarize it tomorrow, but I am an notary of the state of Florida, so I can do that. Margaret, if you could raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government of the United States
Constitution and government of the United States
and of the state of Florida
and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office
that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
under the Constitution of the state
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and I will faithfully perform
the duties of supervisor of the Gateway Services Community Development District
the duty of supervisor of the Gateway Services Community Development District
on which I am now about to enter
on which I am now about to enter
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Actually, pauses in order for not only Margaret, but our two other two members sitting to my left, Kathy Flaherty and to her left is Dan Tinkelman. Now present for their first board meeting. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the first
Mr. Chairman, there's also a second oath that wasn't in here. It's required by the state statute, if I can retrieve that briefly. The state, in their infinite wisdom, has an oath required by the Florida Constitution that the Secretary of State accepts, and that's the one you just took. And the legislature, as I said, in their infinite wisdom, had decided in Chapter 190 to require an oath also, that the Secretary of State doesn't recognize or accept, but it's required. So, bear with me a moment, and if we can do that oath also. That's why at times, a rewrite of Chapter 190 would be very much appreciated. If you'd just bear with me a moment. My assistant cooperates here. Do you have the other one? Ah, okay, thank you. Can you raise your right hand again, please? I, Margaret Feinberg
I, Margaret Feinberg
a citizen of the state of Florida
a citizen of the state of Florida
and of the United States of America
and of the United States of America
and being employed by
and being employed by
or an officer of
or an officer of
the Gateway Services Community Development District
the Gateway Services Community Development District
and a recipient of public funds
and a recipient of public funds
as such employee or officer
as such employee or officer
do hereby solemnly swear or affirm
do hereby solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida
that I will
support
support
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida
Thank you very much, okay. No, I did both, very good. Good test. Thank you.
You're finished for the moment, aren't you?
Yes, I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board, the first thing we need to do, as we stand this afternoon, is to elect officers for the, uh, for the Democratic Committee. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Manager, are you ready to
Yes. Yes, what I'd like is for a motion in a second to open the nominations for chairperson.
Make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I'll take nominations.
I'll make a motion to nominate Margaret Feinberg as chairman.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the nominations for chairperson.
Make that motion second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five zero. At this point, I'll take a motion to accept Margaret as the chairperson.
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, at this point, we'll do the vice chair. Same thing, I'll take a motion in a second to open the nominations for vice chair.
I'll make the motion open.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five zero. Okay, then I'll take nominations for the vice chair.
I'll nominate Bill Guy.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the nominations for vice chair.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, five zero. And then the last piece of business, we'll take a motion to accept Bill Guy as the vice chair.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes, five zero.
Congratulations, Matt, sure.
Thank you.
All right.
No, let's just leave everything where it is for tonight.
Okay, but you're gonna run the meeting.
Yeah. There's no point in moving chairs. Okay, do we have anybody that signed up to speak?
Oh, we do have a resolution here that would actually be the final step.
Oh, sorry.
It basically appoints a chairperson, vice chairperson, and it basically is the entire slate of officers.
Okay. So, the assistant secretaries are the other three board members?
They would be the other board members. At this moment in time, I would be the secretary. And then you can appoint an assistant secretary.
So you'll have three assistant, assistant secretaries?
There'll be, yes. You can, if you needed to, you could do a fourth, but you don't have to. So there's
In other words, all board members, other than the chair and vice chair, would be assistant secretaries under the resolution. And then I think what Stephen is indicating is if you wished to have a fourth person who's not a board member being assistant secretary, that option is available.
Can we, do we have to do that separately? We have to make a motion for each assistant, we can just accept?
You're gonna accept the entire resolution, 2017-05.
And as part of that, that each other board member, Mr. Banks, Mr. Tinkelman, Ms. Flaherty, would be appointed as assistant secretaries, and Mr. Bloom as secretary. You could do it that way.
So do we need to make that motion?
Yes.
So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, do we have people that are
Sure, up first is David Caldwell.
Actually, I'd prefer Neil Montgomery.
Sorry. Just like
No, she's also on the list.
Oh, okay, there's a slash, so. No, that's okay.
Good afternoon, I'm gonna pass out some documents for you, just to kinda help.
Thank you.
Actually, I didn't have all these, but give you a copy again.
Oh, thanks, ma'am.
One of the things that we have concern about is Area 9. WCI has been attempting for a very long time to turn Area 9 over. We've had several meetings with the staff, and where we are is kind of at an impasse. I provided you with some documents. One of them is a letter from 2014, which indicates that the Gateway Services Board is in fact the peremptee on Area 9. That letter indicates that you're out of compliance, that you need to have that project turned over from the construction phase to the operation and maintenance phase. So, we're trying to help you do what you're legally obligated to do. We also see in there an agreement that's been accepted by the board that shows how access is to be provided. Now, the impasse comes about because your attorney's gonna say, "We don't like that access, we want a different permanent access." There isn't another access that WCI is capable of providing. The one that you signed off on, and WCI has signed off on, is the only access that we're able to provide.
Hey, can you do me a favor, just 'cause we've got some new board members? Can you just give just a quick overview of what Area 9 is?
Yeah, I'm sorry. When Gateway was originally approved as a development of regional impact, there were various areas, and essentially, the Area 1 and 2 are the developed part of Gateway. And over on the other side of, on the west side of the interstate, there's an area called Area 9. What Area 9 is, is the conservation area, where a lot of the mitigation for wetland and other impacts has been accomplished over there. So, when you do mitigation, you have to take out exotics, restore hydrology, and do those kinds of functions. That work has been done. It's been certified by the engineers as being complete. The district agrees that the work and the restoration has been complete. And when you complete the work, you have to change from a construction permit to an operation and maintenance permit. And the entity, which is you guys, who's gonna be the operating entity, needs to make sure that transfer happens. So what that letter from the district says is, "Hey, we're ready for you to transfer this to the operation and maintenance phase." WCI has submitted all of the information that you need, except that you'd like a better access, but we're not in charge of that, and WCI doesn't have the power of eminent domain. So they can't go acquire another access. The staff is gracious enough to have a meeting at Tetra Tech's office. We had that meeting and said, "Well, how about we reached out to FDOG and see if we can come in that way?" Folks reached out to FDOG and they said, "No." So, the other alternative that the staff suggested we all explore, we did explore it, and they're not available. But the problem is, is you still need to accept Area 9, and you still need, you guys need to make sure that the transfer of the permit happens. So, that's Area 9. And then there's the issue of gateway roads, and we have provided all of the information on that. I have an email that I can pass out, but it's my understanding that all of the work that needs to be done on the gateway roads for them to be accepted has been done. There was a request to do an additional sign that was above and beyond those shown on the plans. WCI has agreed to do it, but, you know, there's a timeframe in terms of ordering the sign and getting the sign put in. But since that's not something that's required by the plans that were reviewed and approved, we're suggesting that we should at least schedule these items for discussion and acceptance so that we can get into a routine kind of process, and that's something that's missing now. John, the engineer, is here, so he's sitting behind me, so I'm guessing he wants to add to that.
No, the only thing is Doug asked, John Williams from RWA, and I've been the consultant at Pelican Preserve since 2000, so I basically have lived my, almost my whole career at WSCI and at Pelican Preserve. But anyways, I just wanted to point out, this is Area 9 for the new board members. It's on the, it's on the west side of I-75, and it's a total marsh area right there. So that's kinda what I wanted to point out for Area 9, so you knew where it was.
Margaret, is appropriate questions?
Yeah.
I've got several. I take samples there every month and a half for the last two years. It is physically impossible to get there, as you just pointed out now, without something going across the south side of that property that goes to the interstate and goes north. The development of that, no, I don't know what you call it, what's that? Not Renaissance? Reflection Lakes? Has completely closed out anything going from that direction to get up there.
And
But where I'm going to is that you were saying something about taking over operation and maintenance. I was of the opinion and understanding that we've been operating and maintaining it for many years.
And you have, but the problem is, there's a piece of paper and there's steps that you have to take with the Water Management District, and so you need to actually file for the transfer of the permit, since you're the peremptee, from the construction phase to the operation and maintenance phase. So that's something that you need to do to fulfill all the steps under your permit with the South Florida Water Management District. And the other thing is, is you are operating and maintaining it, so you need to do the transfer of the permit, and you need to actually have control of the land. So we need to schedule this for your acceptance so that you can not have loose legal ends for something you're already doing. I agree with you. So we're trying to help you get to the proper conclusion on that.
It sounds like to me that the corner we're going into is a condemnation.
Pardon me?
Sounds like the corner we're going into is a condemnation. Or an eminent domain.
Yeah, there is. I mean, I have heard, not WCI, but another entity perhaps has the right to quiet title on a piece of property. We can't make that entity do it, we don't know if they're gonna do it, but, I mean, but none of us in this room can cause that to happen. So the only vehicle is eminent domain, and you're the ones that have it. Now, it's my understanding that Tony has indicated that we would have to go to the city of Fort Myers to get permission. We will stand with you on that and agree that that needs to happen. So, I mean, we'll partner with you and do whatever has to happen, you know, to get the city manager and the city council to do that. I'm happy to talk to this, to those folks to facilitate that, if that's the direction you go. But I think that is the only recourse to getting a different access than the one you have now.
How many properties are involved that have to be condemned?
My understanding, one. Tony?
That's my understanding, and again, the board is well aware there's more than this little snippet of history that Neil was providing to you today. There's a much more comprehensive history and issues involved. As far as this access, which is a temporary access, and Neil has disagreed with me on that, you've seen those communications in the past. But there is one piece of property, I think Mr. Freeman is the owner, that for about two years or so, I think WCI indicated, had conversations, even offered him, I think $50,000 at one time to acquire an interest, and he didn't come to the table on that. And one other aspect of the meeting that we had at Tetra Tech was the WCI folks were gonna ask Lennar whether or not there'd be an opportunity to switch the temporary access point over a lot to another lot. By the time WCI approached Lennar, that lot had been built upon. So, I mean, there's a lot of noodles in this soup, so to speak. If the board is inclined to go the route of eminent domain, those things can take a short period of time, a long period of time. They, you know, and once again, there's a cost involved in that. And there's a number of steps preliminary to it that need to take place. We're talking, we're not talking a short-term process. One other aspect, and I don't see Danny or Tyler here, I think it'd be helpful, I think, if they would be here to talk about their conversations with South Florida with regards to the fact that there may have been this letter in 2014, but my understanding was there's still mitigation and monitoring activities that occurred up until 2016 in this area. I could be wrong, that it wasn't even ready to be fully transferred over until that occurred. That's just, again, some additional little snippets, but if the board decides they wanna go the eminent domain route, I don't know what that number would ultimately be. You'll find out, 'cause you have to hire an appraiser, you have to have a good faith appraisal.
Yeah, I understand all that. I wanna roll back the clock, 'cause I've been involved in this the last two years, and I'm still trying to figure out how in the dickens we got in this position. When this first was taken over by the district, what was the understanding, or what was the document that this CDD accepted stating that we had this that wouldn't have gotten us into this position?
You mean, why did
How does
At what time did we start maintaining?
Well, I know, we've been maintaining it for a long time. My question is, is that have we been legally accessing that property all these years? We've got vendors that we have just procured that the only way we can get them in there was with a helicopter.
And are we saying that the only accessible route would be that, would require eminent domain, and that there's no other reasonable access route?
Well, that's what I understood. I thought that there at one time was a temporary easement that's about three lots down south of where we were wanting to go, and they
Yes.
they built. But that would require and necessitate some construction. I don't know if there would be any mitigation required, but it's right next to a wetland, and that is the shortest cut to get from a road that would require going through, or necessitate going through a lot
Yeah, the document that I gave you is the latest easement agreement.
This is the one that Neil had, which we've discussed before. This has the temporary easement, and it goes through, over the roads, pitted roads, comes to this lot
Yes.
and then goes to that easement.
Correct.
And that's further south.
Where's that?
My question on all this is, who picks up the tab for the improvements, the legal fees, and all of that to do this? That's where I'm going. Who picks up the tab?
Well, there's a finer question on this, and that is, why in the dickens do we have this in the first place?
It actually started back in the eighties. The initial development scheme was at Westing, because of the issues concerning the access, as I understand it, I could be wrong, David was president of the creation, I wasn't.
I just handed April
Westinghouse would do the work on the west side because of the concern about the access. The district would do the work on the east side of I-75, up until just west of I-75, because district had access. That's my retrieving some old minutes.
Well, I just handed April minutes from 1989, and Mr. Caldwell indicated back in 1989 consistently it was gonna do the work, but that access was likely to have to be obtained through eminent domain. So I don't think WCI's position had changed those minutes indicate in 1989 that that was likely to be the situation.
That was, that was thought in 89?
Mr. Caldwell said that to the board in 1989, yes.
So then the developer that basically ran and had control of the CDD made that decision for us?
Yeah, and by the way, I appreciate Neil retrieving the minutes that I provided to everybody, so. So, I mean, to all the staff members, so Neil didn't just
Well, this is, this is not only a wetland, this is a pond. That pond is critical to our water quality going into Six Mile Cypress.
Howard, you said you were taking samples right there. How are you doing, how are you getting there now, or how have you been doing that?
Why would you wanna ask me something that I gotta take the fifth on?
Okay, never mind, I didn't ask
I have been taking the route that has been the path of least resistance for the last two years to be able to get a sample. And the issue is, is that we went the last time, and the house blocked us. So we had to go down, and that's why, Neil, I was questioned. I thought, from what I would've been told, there were three properties that if you took that southern route and went due east to 75, and then went right up 75, I was of the opinion there were three properties involved.
That route maybe, but I still I talked to the attorney who represents a different developer of one of those projects, and asked them, and complicated, but he says he thinks that there's another route, and that that Lennar, in this case, actually owns it, but that they need to do a quiet title with Freeman.
Yeah, I think, and again
But what we can't make them do that.
I think part of the history was in the prior, there was an original deed or conveyance back, I think you're talking about Tom Gunderson.
Yes.
And there was a question as to whether or not there was a mistake or a legal description of property being conveyed, and Neil corrected me from wrong, and/or an easement reserved. And that is the subject of what Neil was talking about, the quiet title act. And that's why the file on this matter is about taller than I am, which is not all that tall necessarily. But we had prior memos to the board that described these various areas and the pieces that were missing, and where the access needed to be provided. And after this discussion today, I would suggest that we can put that together again for the board, have a full package in front of you before you make any decisions. But I know I had some questions.
I think the issue I've got is, the first to me is, who's paying for this? Because if we're gonna pay it, what I envision as being the shorter way and cheaper way would be going up there through that lot and cutting through that one, buying that one lot that is on that picture, on the plan view. That one going across the bottom, first of all, it is a long way to go, and that road is in absolutely deplorable condition. If you aren't going back there four-wheel drive, you won't make it.
Yeah, I think, and I think the lot you're talking about, I think when Tyler went out there last time
Is it available?
That there, well, there's a lot, under this description, we have an easement over some lots. And I think Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, when you went out there last time, or Tyler did, there was a concrete washout there, a wash, a concrete truck washdown area, and a berm. So what requires some construction activities, and maybe a modification of a conservation easement, and some additional construction activity?
Yeah, I think, yeah, well, the access through that is under, I didn't personally go out there, but I saw the photos. It's really not something that's accessible at this point.
Well, the issue is, is from the road and the cul-de-sac that goes back there to cul-de-sac, from that road over to the back of the lot line, that's simple, if you have access to the lot. From there beyond that pond, that's where you got some problems, that's gonna have some construction issues, 'cause it's, there's no way you can get a vehicle through.
Is that a vacant lot, Ed?
It was vacant as of two weeks ago. The rate they're building, God only knows.
Through the conservation portion?
When you get to the back of that lot
Right.
as I understand it, it goes along a pond or a conservation, I can't tell, it dries a bone right now.
Yeah.
But it looked to me like it was an old pond, bank, that that would have to be leveled out to be able to get any type of a vehicle.
Yeah.
Once you get past that, it's just a wooded area
Right.
that you have to go through, and I don't believe that that is a wetland. If it is, then, David Chang, you said, "Is it a wetland?" That means, I guess, you got some mitigation then to do. 'Cause that's gonna be another, what, 150, 200 feet to get through it?
And who owns that?
That
That I don't know.
That, I think the CDD, Renaissance Community Development District, owns that property, I believe.
Yes.
Between
To a point, and then I think then it enters to the WCI property.
Correct. So between Reflection Isles, Reflection Isles?
Yeah.
Yes.
Subdivision or community, and this Area 9, there is a piece of property that's owned by Renaissance Community Development District, if I'm not mistaken. No?
No.
Who owns that?
The, Dave Caldwell, WCI. Tony's question, it's Reflection Isles Association that owns all of those areas outside of the platted subdivision. It, it's a it's somewhat unfair to throw this mess of issues It, it's a, we, we, it's somewhat unfair to throw this mess of issues at the board without your, having a prepared package. I think what we were trying to do is, we have been trying to work with staff for months and months on this turnover. We're getting nowhere. We were looking for direction at this meeting, so that the board could instruct staff that this is something that needs to get resolved, and come back with a definitive action plan to resolve it. The issue goes back historically, way back into the eighties. The Area Nine is the ultimate outfall for the drainage system for most of Gateway and most of Pelican Preserve. That's where all the stormwater drainage goes. It has been from the get-go. So that was an integral part of the permit with South Florida Water Management District, and your comprehensive master water management plan. The contract and the permit for the Area Nine area was initially with the Gateway Services District. The permit's in your name. You already own some of the land out there. We own the principal amount of it, and had, over the years, being brought through the mitigation requirements, brought it up to some standard that was finally acceptable recently, was South Florida Water Management District. And that's why it's sort of coming to a head now, as opposed to nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety. We finally got it to the point where South Florida was accepting it. All we're trying to do is two things. Deed you the remainder of the land, and have the district go from a construction permit, which it now has, over to an operation and maintenance permit. Yes, there are many issues lingering on this, proper access and whatever, but you had that problem back in nineteen eighty. That's the minutes pointed out. We discussed it back on prior boards. How do we solve this problem? We'll probably have to use eminent domain. Amazing how it comes back to having an issue to resolve it. But over the past couple of years, we've been trying to get better access for the district, for anyone who needs to go back there, be it contractors or district staff. But Reflection Isles, they gave the district and WCI an easement. Intended to be interim, because the better easement was this one that goes through, a portion goes through a Mr. Friedman's property, it's over by the interstate. And he's been very unwilling, even with, when you throw offers of purchasing the easement from him, he has not responded in any affirmative way, meaning that he wants to give an easement. So we've struck out.
David, let me interrupt.
Mr. Sky wanted to ask Tony a question.
Tony, there, there's some time, a passage of time makes things better, and sometimes it does. But from what I've heard today and previous days, if, if this is going to be resolved, the same thing to me is though, South Florida Water Management is going to have, have a heavy hand in resolving it. I don't think we're going to resolve it beautifully. I understand that WCI-
And I don't think, no, I'm not asking for this to be resolved, other than hopefully board understand, we're trying to keep this moving to a satisfactory resolution for all parties. But we were at an impasse.
I think we want South Florida, they've been pretty good, I think, understanding the issues to date. And Neil, Neil has constantly mentioned they're subject to fine or subject to penalties, but I think that, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, you've had some good conversations with them, and they understand the issue, they want it resolved, but they've not been pushing it.
Yeah, and it is Renaissance that owns that parcel.
I thought it was Renaissance CDD that owns that property.
So, so-
Was that CDD?
Yes.
We're just trying to get the item scheduled, because we haven't been able to get it scheduled. And I gave you enough information so you can understand why, I think there's a problem, to hopefully encourage you to schedule, so we can resolve some of those problems. And likewise, on the Gateway Roads, we'd like to have that scheduled. And I have an email where Kyler said, he doesn't have a problem, he can recommend-
No, no, I think Neil, when you're talking about Gateway Roads, you mean Boy Scout, Girl Scout Lane, Eagle Point, Commerce Lake Drive?
And, and before we start moving forward to roads-
Yeah, before we switch that-
Can we take one second?
I'm not yet done on this other one.
So, look, Neil and Dave and WCI, I understand you want to push for some type of action. I think what we need, and really what you're requesting, is for the board to direct action on our staff. And I think what we want is some potential resolution options from, from our staff and engineer, and, and with legal counsel, so we can determine what is the best course of action, action for, for this board to move forward.
Well, do we have the right to condemn, is this inside our district? It's outside it?
No.
It's outside our district?
It's correct, but we have-
So we'd have to go through, what, the city or the county?
We just need the approval of the city to initiate it, and that's just a consent.
Because it's in the city.
Correct. But it, but it, once again, it's just a matter of asking them to bless it. They, they don't participate in the proceedings, it's just them consenting to it. One, one other thought was, and this might be a crazy thought, is, if the board gives us direction to come back with various scenarios and approaches. One would be whether or not in the interim to authorize the staff to have initial conversations with the managers of the Renaissance Community Development District, with regards to the possibility of entering into an interlocal agreement with Renaissance. They have that area is under, they have a conservation easement, and they have obligations, obviously, to maintain their area. So whether it's possible to enter an agreement where they would perform maintenance activities or allow us some kind of access over that area-
I mean, we need-
Because if they, if they have to access their property for maintenance-
How are they going to get it any better than we can?
No, but if they have to access their property for their maintenance activities, could they then just cross over a line to engage in activities on our area? That's all I'm thinking. I, I think it's worth at least talking with them.
Right, we need to do our due diligence, and I think there needs to be a couple of different options. And I don't want eminent domain to be our primary course of action, because that's, you could flip a coin on that sometimes. So can we direct staff to, to work on some options?
Well, what happened in the last meeting, I guess we, from what I was hearing, is we had a meeting, and it didn't materialize in anything.
No, what, what happened was, we had that meeting, as Neil mentioned, I mentioned at Tetra Tech, we had various approaches. One was to contact FDOT, and my understanding is the contact was only at the local level and not the secretary level in Bartow, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's the ultimate decision, is up in Bartow. So I think we still have that letter, we can still find that letter, to have those conversations with FDOT. Secondly, the, another aspect was to inquire of Lennar whether or not that we could have access over the property at the northern end on that cul-de-sac, that at that time was vacant. By the time WCI got to Lennar and got an answer back, the house was under construction.
Yeah.
So, and, and that was one of the other alternatives.
It's going to get worse.
Well, the rate we go, it wouldn't surprise me, next week when I go up there to sample, that, that old one's going to-
Well, it hasn't been sold.
No, we have an easement over there. We have an easement over-
That one lot, that gets us to-
That goes east.
That goes east.
Yes. We have, that's what this document-
So it's a combination of then mitigation and construction, that we have to pick up the cost down?
Yeah, and I guess from Lennar's perspective, they have a lot that they can't sell or develop. And whether they care or not, whether their neighborhood cares about us using that to get, go back and forth, that's another part of the scenario about further discussions, but-
If we, if we sent this to bring it back to the board at the first meeting in January, which is January fifth, does that give everybody enough time to accumulate the information that they need?
It's going to be harder for the holidays. I, I would push it towards the, probably the end of January.
As far as, as far as developing recommendations, I think we could do that in January.
By the first meeting, or do you-
Yes, first meeting in January. Once again, a lot of the background is already there, it's just a matter of coming up the three or four scenarios, and what estimated cost would be-
Well, that's it, it's the estimated cost and hypotheticals that go along with that.
And we are resolved to the fact that we're picking up the tab.
Well, I think that's yet to be determined.
That might be part of one of the scenarios too, as part of the discussion.
Well, and-
Dave's always happy to negotiate.
Well, I'm trying to get an answer out of that, and I'm not hearing anything.
And I guess part of that conversation would be, I think part of the discussion from what the staff recommends, and WCI will have their input, obviously, is, again, going back to these minutes of eighty-nine, when David was, they were talking about the, the Area Nine area. And Mr. Caldwell said, I would like to work with Mr. McNeil, who was the district council at the time, to add language to the easement document, to give the district reasonable rights for ingress and egress to the property. So I look at that as being an assurance by WCI at the time, even though there was that conversation about condemnation, that there would be ingress and egress to the property. So, again, I think that could be part of the conversation, whether or not WCI agrees to what the staff recommends to the board, or what the board ultimately decides.
Well, our January meetings are the fifth and the nineteenth.
By the fifth is?
The fifth is fine with you?
Danny?
Yeah, if that's fine with me, and if we could put the Gateway Roads on that agenda too, that would be super-
Well, once again, when we're talking Gateway Roads, we're talking about Eagle Point, Girl Scout, correct, Commerce Lake? Yeah, and I will have my, the title work on that, I got the documents the other day. I only have concerns that are, there are four subdivision covenants that are indicated as being applicable to those roads, and I need to just make sure those are not adverse to the district, and that can be achieved by January fifth also.
Okay, terrific.
Are we talking about the six roads that we, you guys paid, that we're not going to go to the county?
Yes.
You just named four.
Oh, there's another segment, I can't recall it.
Well, you've got the Devonshire.
West Lakes?
Now, you've got Devonshire, you've got Commerce Lake Drive East, that little piece, Girl Scout, Eagle Point, one more, one more.
I can bring them all, but there were-
What was the other one, David? There was, there were six, the seventh one was Fairway Lakes Office Bar, and that one's still up in the air.
But it is, but it is those segments, Ed.
It is those segments.
Yes. And that could be January fifth.
Yeah, I read for last, you sent you-
Oh, yeah, I've got tons of stuff.
Okay.
That's my Christmas reading. No, that'll be done, I'll be plowing through those title exceptions.
The only exception, I'll say, is that, you know, the fifth, as far as reaching DOT and, you know, getting any sort of-
I could waste on telling what DOT you're in.
Yes or no from them? Well, I'd like to keep it on there as an option, and we can talk about it, and we'll reach, we'll reach out to them further, but-
Well, Danny, just let us know if you have issues with getting feedback and getting everything prepared.
Yeah, and, and I guess one perspective, Danny, even though it may, may not have a definite answer back, but I think a lot of these can be done in parallel. In other words, if the district were to embark on an eminent domain process, it doesn't preclude continuing to work with DOT.
Right, I mean, DOT is the, is the shortest access, but my guess is, they're going to say-
Have the board members been out there and seen this?
Yeah, they're going to say no because of that.
You might, you might ingress off of the seventy-five south, but boy, I'll tell you, I sure wouldn't want the responsibility telling Aquagenics they got to take that boat and trailer, come up that ramp, and get onto seventy-five with cars doing ninety out there.
Well, and, and I think that's what, we need staff to call out the current issues and really paint a good picture.
Never even consider that as an option.
Okay.
So we're settled on the fifth?
We need to, need to have some meetings internally to go with this.
I agree. No problem.
Anything else?
Yes, also from WCI, John Williams.
Pardon?
Want to talk about Prado at Pelican Preserve.
We can talk six figures for that.
Thank you again. You know, one of the things is, is that currently, we're trying to bring pretty much closer to the Pelican Preserve project, and we're looking, working on the last two phases of the project. And currently, right now, we're working on trying to close homes by the end of the year. And working as the consultant for WCI, my ultimate goal is to achieve that. And right now, we're at a, and more or less, I won't say an impasse, but we're at a, a point in the project where we've done our, our preliminary walkthrough, we've done a final walkthrough, we've submitted all the documents for the utilities, the water and sewer. And at this point, now, we're, we're struggling with, you know, or looking for the board's direction on getting staff to be able to sign off on the Department of Health Form for Water, so we can get meters to the homes for closure, as well as the sewer connection. And so, you know, right now, I'm looking for the board's direction to help staff move that ball forward, so that we can achieve the ultimate goal of closing homes by the end of the year. And, you know, over the last two months, we've met with staff, we have been directed by the Utility Operations Director, and we've also been directed by your, your engineering and Tetra Tech. And right now, it's, it's more or less a, trying to get where both of them are in the same agreement, and it is my understanding at the present moment, that the only person that is able to sign these forms is April White, as your operations manager. And so I'm just looking for some, a little bit of assistance in trying to have you guys tell staff, you know, to move the ball forward. That's really why I'm here. And I can answer any questions if you like.
It sounds too simple. What's complicated about it?
Bill?
What's the issue?
Are you familiar with this?
I'm pretty familiar with this. I've had lots of conversations about this item, and I'm, I'm very willing to go through it, but I, I think Danny would probably be the, the better one. Danny, would you come to the podium, please, and-
Yes, sir.
-give us the background?
Is it, is it something we'd asked before, or is it just?
What specifically on? I mean, we've, we've gone through, we've reviewed the, the facilities. I know we had issues in the neighboring communities, and I think in this particular community on closing on these homes. I know that John had discussions with, with Chris last week, and regarding, I think one of the issues was on the, the sewer being activated without the adequate flow through it. And I don't know the outcome of that, John probably can fill you in better than I could on that. And I think if they reached an amicable agreement on that, then I don't think there were any, you know, issues there.
Well, why don't you talk to us about the, the light pole and all of the difficulties resulted from trying to proceed faster than normal?
Well, the light pole issue was not in, it was in the neighboring community, and we've had discussions with that. And I don't think it's anything that should hold up closing of any, of any homes. It's, it's not ideal, and Terry has gone out and he's looked at that, and he doesn't see any, he doesn't see any issues with being able to access the easement or the line in this case. That being said, you know, we've had discussions with WCI as, as well as with RWA, and moving forward, when FPNL is going to put poles in, we've, you know, we volunteered to review those plans and discuss any issues that we have, which, which they have, they have forwarded us the plans for the Prado area, and we've looked at that, and we've seen some, you know, some issues. Those issues don't exist today, because they haven't been installed, but we have reached out to RWA and WCI on what those issues are. Essentially, what's happened, at, at least in, you know, the, the pole in question and potential future poles, is they are in the vicinity, if not right on top of our easement, or right in the vicinity of where we have water lines or possible storm drains. So it's not only an accessibility to those facilities, it's also an accessibility where we have a lake maintenance easement to actually utilize that easement and, and access it. So we have an issue with, with, with one pole. We've discussed it, Ed has gone out there with, with Terry, and I understand that one particular issue, it's, Gateway seems to be okay with, with that. And then, like I said, moving forward, you know, we've offered to review those and, and let WCI and RWA know in advance if we see any issues with it. That was part of the problem in the past, is we have no control or review over the private facilities. We only see the development plans that are coming through of what WCI is installing, and that's the roads, the water, the sewer, and, and those drainage structures and related features. So we do not see those private facilities. So we've since had some good communication on that, so moving forward. So I think we're down to the issue of, and I don't, I just don't know how it was resolved in terms of, you know, the sewer question, but we don't want to, to hold anything up on our side.
Yes.
It's not our goal.
The last time you and I had a conversation was ten days ago, and at that time, I very definitely got the impression that you or Tyler and/or somebody were not going to allow the inspections, which would result in the meters, which would result in the work that would end up with the CO and the selling of these houses before the end of the year. Now, if I've stated that wrong, please tell me, or if you've changed your mind, please tell me. But, like 10 days ago, I thought it was an impasse, and if you're telling me it is no longer and everybody's happy, then lies John here.
Well, the issue, well, I think John's here to make sure that, that it moves forward, because they've, they've got a commitment to, to close, so that's why he's here. But, you know, our, our issue is, is remain primarily with this, the issue of the pole. That was an issue that we had, and, and as I mentioned, Terry and Gateway is, their, their position's a little bit different, we can give the recommendations. Now, your permit criteria manual states that you're to review things as a whole, you can review partial, so you don't have to review partial, it's not our recommendation not to review partial, and, and personally, I don't want to hold anything up. But that is, I think, the biggest issue is, is not, is not this pole, which isn't a different community, the biggest issue is, is dealing with the septic flow. That issue came up after you and I talked last, but that, that is, that is the bigger issue that, that, you know, Gateway has observed. So, and I don't, I'm not sure where, how they've resolved that issue, Chris had a couple of options that he volunteered.
What a mess. First of all, I, I agree with Danny on the issue of the pole, I don't see that as being that critical of an item. It's one on a utility easement, it's 25 feet wide, and if you go out and look at the measurements, assuming that the measurements of what the design showed and the as-built were one and the same, Terry agrees that we can get through it, it's not that big of an issue. Where I have a little bit of a difference of opinion would be is if this would have been a lake easement and/or a drainage easement that has exclusivity. There isn't supposed to be any electrical poles in a drainage easement. A utility easement, that's a different story.
And this is a utility.
This is a utility.
And this is a utility.
And that's why I say I would have a, a different opinion if this had to been a drainage easement, but it is not. The issue of the septicity, and I mean, I've done this for 40 years, you have this when you build out projects. You go into communities and you start, you don't have houses in, on every lot, and you don't have houses, you might even have them built, but not occupied, so they're not producing flow. So it becomes an operational issue of the septicity on the wastewater, in the lines, in the forest veins, and at the pump station. So the issue is, is that what has been our practice in the past, what have we done, what have we incurred on other similar areas where we have allowed this phased type of work?
Yeah, let me just make one comment. I don't, I don't even know why we're spending the time to talk through this issue. We've got staff with a recommendation, or at least staff, we, we entrusted them to do their jobs, and if there are issues from staff, there's holding back certain things, and no offense, John, to you, but it's our staff's job to make sure that things are enforced. If there is a conflict of opinion from staff, then it comes to us, we make a decision. So, I, I don't know why we're spending time on this issue when staff is doing their job.
I'm, I'm looking to see what the alternative solution is.
April?
April White, your operations manager. Okay, so, let's recap for the benefit of the entire board of what the issue is. This issue is not about a light pole. Chris and I have had conversations, we've sat down with, with the engineers, we've sat down with legal, and we have tried to address what is going on here in, at Gateway. When I got here, I don't know anything about this community development issue, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out there were some things, what I considered were going wrong, that as a district, we have been taking on and incurring a liability, perhaps, at the inappropriate times of construction as the developers, not just WCI, this isn't just a WCI issue, management has been addressing it as development as a whole, but WCI is the main, the main developer that, that are the concerns right now. So it's not about a light pole. We got beyond the light pole some time ago, that that wasn't creating an issue. What this issue is about is, what I was seeing is staff over encumbered by the construction areas. We run ourselves rampant, going out there flushing lines, having customer complaints about smelly water, and I couldn't figure out what was going on. And so we've been riding this thing and incurring these costs from an operational perspective until Chris got here. And then we started drilling down because, you know, now we have somebody going out to these construction sites, we have, we have this process, and I, and Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have this, we have to become the operating entity of these lines, of this, of the utility, in order to provide them water on the construction site so they can build these houses. So, that's where we are taking on liability, on all the water and the sewer running through those lines. We're signing a document, I've signed one, based on the recommendation of the engineer, didn't fully understand what it was that I was signing, but that is how we've done it in the past. Management has been signing the documents, taking on the liability of the, on, on the district, and not what I consider properly assessing the risk and properly getting the authority at the board level. So that's one phase of it, is we accept this, as, we accept the responsibility as this operating entity. We've been reaching out to see how other governments do it, and that's not how other local governments are doing it. So we've, we're trying to get, we're, we're in a fact finding stage right now, we're trying to figure out what we can do differently to minimize the risk to the district. So the second phase, the big, the big step of all of this, is that we're accepting the assets. So all of the assets are conveyed to the district, and that has been before the construction is complete. So they're still out there performing construction, and what we see in, what we've seen in pictures since we've actually had boots on the ground, and Chris has been going out there, and we've been asking the engineers to go out more and inspect, is because, you know, historically, we haven't had boots on the ground. We haven't had anybody out there constructing these websites, or these construction sites. And so there's, you know, cracked pipes, and there's, there's potential intrusion into, into the lines, I don't know what goes on on these construction sites. Ultimately, I think at the end of the day, WCI repairs that stuff, but I don't know what is happening to the system as, as those pipes are broken during this construction phase, and what has gotten into those pipes, getting into our lift stations, and all of this, I don't understand that component. So, Chris and I, from a management perspective, we've been putting on the reins, we're like, okay, wait a minute, let's slow down the pace. What is going on out here at this construction site? What liability are we taking on, on, you know, and loading on to the taxpayers? What are the operational costs to the district? And how can we do things differently? So we've sat down with the attorney, we've been looking at our permit criteria manual, and there's definitely language in there that indicates that we have the right to be involved in the process and, and, and inspecting these construction sites all the way until they're complete. So what we've, what we've observed is that by us taking on this liability of, as the operating entity, we're taking on, we're talking, taking on exposure, not sure so far if we've taken on, other than the operational burden and those operational costs, but WCI is still, you know, putting in meters, and they're paying connection fees, and, and doing all of that stuff. But then, if we transfer, if we convey the assets to us very early on in the construction, our permit criteria manual gives us the, the ability to continue inspecting those sites as, as we should, this is, these are our assets, now they've been conveyed to us, this is what we've been doing historically, but someone else is still constructing them and destroying them on, on these construction sites. I mean, some of you have seen some of the pictures, it can get kinda hairy. So, we've just been trying to reel it in and figure out, okay, well, how, how are other municipalities and governments doing this? How do they defer the liability to their taxpayers? Where is the liability appropriate, where, where is it appropriately, you know, located at? Should it be on the builder, should it be on the taxpayers here? And do we have the staff to manage this? Because we don't have boots on the ground, we don't have the ability to do these inspections every day, so the engineers have been doing some of that, Chris has been out there. And we, we can, still continue to see some problems, we've been creating punch lists, and so that's where we, where we're at. We've, we're trying to figure out that if we continue what we're doing, that if we, if we ultimately become the operating entity, we take on the liability, and then ultimately we let the, we, we can have these assets conveyed to us, even though, I guess technically, we've, we've determined that we can continue to invoice the developer for these inspections, and we could technically still be involved, but at that point, to collect, we can build them, but at that point, if we've already had the assets conveyed to us, we have no leverage to actually collect that. Because we have, so, so what we've been trying to do is, in my mind, what I see happening, and what it looks like is kind of intended by this permit criteria manual, is that, well, okay, if we wanna keep, continue with our practice of taking on the liability as the operating entity, that gives them water to build, but not accept the assets until, let it, let the permit criteria manual lead us and do a phase in or something other than what we're doing, so we can continue to inspect, we can continue to pass, defer that burden back to the developer, and at the end of the day, when those assets are ready to be conveyed to us, all of our inspection costs that apparently we have the ability to bill for will be paid and summarized before those assets are conveyed. That's how management is looking at this, and we're not doing, we're not violating our permit criteria manual. We're trying to reel it in to make sure that we're not encumbering the district with liability that we shouldn't be incurring in actually utilizing our permit criteria for what may be how the language was intended. We've been working with legal, so I feel a lot of this is, is yes, we have changed, you, you could say we've changed our practices, but I think what we're trying to do is actually realign with our policy to make sure that we are deferring the liability to the taxpayers. So this isn't about a light pole, this is about us pushing back. Yes, there was a meeting, we had this meeting, and we said that we were going to do, we made that, we made that commitment in good faith, that we were gonna do what we could do to get, I think it was 10 houses or, or something up by the end, end of December. But that, in between that and now, is, is having us become the operating entity for this line, to, so they can have water out there. And that's where we're at, there's still some issues, you know, to address out there. We provided some, some options, we provided some, one of those options, and I'll let, I'll let Chris get into the details because he's been working on it more, but, you know, we provided some options to WCI, and that wasn't something that they were interested in, that's how I understand it anyway, and maybe something has changed currently. And Chris can get into the details of what he's seeing from an operation perspective, but this is what Chris and I have been conversing about, this is the problem, we're trying to do things differently. If we wanna continue, if it's the direction of the board, to continue to do what we've been doing, you know-
No, it sounds like you're, you are doing the right thing with the permit criteria manual.
Can I step in here? Because I don't completely agree.
Hold on, just a minute, Ed.
I wanna make sure I understand this. These houses are on lines, water and sewer and irrigation, that have been built, tested, and approved for hook-on, correct? So we're past that point?
Well, no, no, we're not at that point yet, because we do not have clearance from the state yet. We need clearance from the state, which is the certification forms that need to be signed by Gateway, as well as Lee County Utilities, before you could put the meter in, and-
But that's not my question. My question is, have they met spec and all the tests necessary to allow connection to them?
Yes.
So that we're past that.
Yeah.
Now it's been, it seems to me, that it's a maintenance issue, and that's where we're having the problem of the maintenance problems associated with taking this, what I would say, an early hookup.
Right, I mean-
To facilitate an early hookup.
Right, I mean, as you know, okay, there's two, there's two pieces to the puzzle, there's land, and then there's vertical. And where April is referring to is in the vertical stage, where the home construction is actually occurring. Land goes in there, we do the infrastructure in, in the community, we have nice pads, everything looks beautiful, and then vertical goes in, and I think that's where April is. And the design criteria manual is related to the land operation part of getting a permit to be able to have meters released to homes. So, you know, currently, right now, we've gone out there, we've done the land part of the, the game, we've prairie built some homes out there, and within the next, by the end of December, we'll have 28 homes ready to go. So I mean, the thing is, is that when you go do the land part of it, that's where the design criteria manual is, that's where my checklist is, that's where all my forms are filled out, that's where I've done all my testing, I've done Bapties on the water main, I'm ready to go. You know, the part of, the second part of it, where we're talking about, you know, when, as soon as we put Prado online, we're looping the water main. We're gonna create a better water situation throughout all of Matarita, Three, Four, Casella, because the water is not a dead end anymore, it's gonna be looped and ready to go, so you're gonna get better water quality. Yes, we know if, when people go back north, and they come back, their water's sitting in their, in their heater, they're sitting in their houses, we know all that, but there's really nothing that, where's the land side of the quality in the, in the, in the house? That, that's where I'm at. I'm trying to work with staff to accommodate the land side of things, and yes, I understand what April's saying, you go to every construction site that's building, D.R. Horton is building within the Gateway Service District, they're running over this stuff, just like, you know, WCI guys are, but it's not land. And that's where I'm trying to get the-
Kathy, you have a question? No, not yet.
I, I totally understand where they're coming from, I've done it for years.
Right.
I don't see a problem with this, as long as we have some way to refund or get the monies that we're incurring for the maintenance that's caused by, let's say, septic conditions, if we have to go out and pump water. The, the issue of a damage, that can come up whether you have two houses on a line that's designed for 50, or you have 50 on it, you still have that, and you have that under your warranties and things, so I'm not worried about that. But the maintenance issue certainly concerns me, that we need to be protected, if Chris is gonna have to go out, have a truck come out and flush out lines, flush out pump stations, or we have septicity going to the wastewater treatment plant, and then Lee County comes after us because we have a high H2S content, those are all things that we are going to have to pass on to you as a risk if we go this route. Now, if you're willing to do that, I would be willing to go the other way.
Right, but Ed, it's not in the design criteria manual, so how do I play the game of an agreement with the district if I don't know what the game is?
I, I understand that, I think the issue is, is where we're heading right now is, is going the opposite deal, taking the hardcore of, we don't do anything till we get to a, a, a longer position, or a, a more final position. I'm trying to facilitate a happy medium.
I'm Rhonda Brewer with WCI Communities.
Hold on one second, please. I have, Kathy, you wanna go first?
I wanted to hear from Chris.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, so I have two questions. One is, is our staff unanimous in support of the current direction that we have now? And that would be Chris, operations, and our district engineer. And then, and Chris, do you agree with the, with the current direction that we're taking now?
I'll give you my three minutes summary.
Okay. And then Danny, if you could just let us know, if, I think, I would say that you are in, in agreement, based on your previous comments, okay?
No, and, and basically, we've been working with them and, and moving the process along, and one of the concerns I had, and that really is because of some of the water quality complaints that we get out of Matarita and Casella with low flows, and especially when, you know, the new construction was going in, you might have four, fourplexes, and there's only two people living in there. So, you know, obviously, the water's gonna get stagnant or stay, especially in the building, and the second side of it is a wastewater plant, if you have 20 homes on it, and the stations and the lines are designed for 377 homes, you're gonna have septic conditions, you aren't gonna have the velocities. And, and I spoke with John about this, and some concerns that I had about it, and, you know, we talked about possibly WCI paying to surcharge and paying the flushing costs until about 60% of the units, or until the flows were normal, and-
Did they agree to that?
No, basically, Mr. Pap has pointed out to me, and he said, well, have you done this before with the other development projects? And I said, no, sir, we basically accept them upfront. He said, is it in your design criteria manual? I said, no, sir, it's not. And he said, well, how can you make us do it? And I said, well, I can't, we'll just proceed along the way it's been done. And they did ask for a walkthrough right before Thanksgiving, and I did push that to Monday, so it slowed it down a little bit, just 'cause our staff was gone, but I believe all the punch list items were sent over to them, and the answers and everything's been taken care of, so I think in the last week, it's been moving along. So I think in the last week, it's been moving along.
No, I mean, look at, my concern is the end goal at the end of the day, okay? Um, you know, RWA did Arborwood. I don't know if you're familiar where Arborwood is, but it's adjacent to the Gateway Service District. And 410 homes are in that first plot. And there is one lift station and there's only so many houses online right at the present moment. But the city of Fort Myers has taken on the responsibility. After we provided them all the documents, they do what I've normally done in my whole career in Collier, Lee, City Benia Springs. We put the stuff online on the land side of things. And this is the first time where I don't know, and I'm sorry for my ignorance, of the game that I'm playing at the present moment for my client. And that's trying to figure out, how am I supposed to get the DEP form signed if all of a sudden now I'm asked to do something to 60% of the houses are done? And so that's where I'm, why I'm here in front of the board is I'm asking for a little bit of assistance with moving that ball forward in terms of being able to put land online. And Ed, as you know, as a civil, it's, it's the same thing it's been forever. So, I mean.
Have we ever had any issues?
Where's the 60% come from?
That's why Chris is, came up with a, and, you know, and so the agreement, I don't know, it's not in writing. It's verbal. And so I'm, that's where, you know, my experience is I, I play by rule books.
So I just have one other question. Uh, have we ever had any issues with WCI obtaining invoices or fees from maintenance that we've had to do in the past? We haven't had any issues with, have we just not invoiced them? We just, we just incur?
I don't think we've.
So we've just been taking it on in the past and eating that?
That's what I'm gathering.
Okay.
And I think that's what the issue is.
Is should we continue to eat, um, these reoccurring maintenance costs or?
I, I don't know that, this is the first time I've heard it, uh, and like, uh, he was saying, others accept it, but we're doing a little bit different. We're not, you know, the city of Fort Myers or some of the larger utilities that can absorb it. But the issue is, is that I'd love to hear from, uh, Chris on that. Is, is that maintenance deal, Chris, an option that would alleviate the concerns you have of accepting it in this, in this condition?
Well, I think so. We just looked at that as helping, you know, at least getting the flows going until we had enough houses in there we could look at it. Um, but I have to say, the, the permit manual doesn't allow us to do it. It would allow us to phase a development in, but this one wasn't phased, it was approved as is. And the developments before it, you know, that's the way it's been done. The districts has accepted it. And I, I just had concerns because we are the operating entity and if we're not out there and Home Building has 20 houses and the guys bust a water line, you know, and it's like, oh, we'll fix that. Well, what's gone in the line? Was it chlorinated? Was it tested to make sure, you know, following DEP? And then I get a call from a customer, hey, I've got dirt in my line. So we have all the liability for it and that's the reason I was trying to address it that way. But again, historically, it wasn't done that way and it's not in the permit manual to do it that way. So I just backed off and said, then let it proceed.
Danny, what about a condition, is this, can this be considered conditional approval?
I mean, we're okay with it. I mean, I, I get Chris's point and we fully support, um, what Chris has said and what April said. The permit criteria manual basically says it's, it's whole, um, but it does allow you the ability to accept, um, a partial system, so.
And if I may, I'm just rereading, there may be an opportunity for us to invoice them and make them pay for the damage under our utility rule, where we have a segment there that says damaging, tampering with, altering facilities of the utility system. No person shall damage or cause to be damaged any meter or water or wastewater pipe or fittings connected with or belonging to a district water or wastewater system. Uh, and in such manners to cause loss or damage to the district. So I think arguably, you know, and, and that would then allow us to send them an invoice and if they don't pay it, we can just continue service.
That's, that's what I was looking for, is a happy medium.
I'm looking at the utility rule. That's section 23.
Are you comfortable with that, John?
No, Tony, you're correct. If, if a meter is put in place and it is damaged, yes, we understand that piece of the puzzle, you know?
No, I'm talking about the construction aspect too, which gets back to infiltration.
Right, but not, not an agreement to flush lines and stuff like that. That's the part where, I mean, yes, if there's damage.
It causes loss to the district.
Right, and, and my, always, my concern always is life safety, okay?
But what I'm saying is Chris's concern about if there's an intrusion resulting from that breakage, there's a loss to the district. We have a cost and a loss. And so in my opinion, this would provide the opportunity to invoice you all, make you all pay for it.
Right, and I also believe that all throughout Matarita, when Chris would, or Tyler was going out there doing their inspections, that WCI has also repaired or taken care of any, uh, activity that they've asked for to date, you know?
Chris, you're comfortable with that, with what Tony said about if there is some issues? What about finding it and the inspections?
Well, finding inspections?
The damage.
Oh, well, that's, yeah, yeah, sometime, of course, underground, but no, some of the things that, and it does happen in Home Building, I've seen it before, you know, they're out there working and they'll bust the sewer clean out and, you know, the guys are in there, they'll run it over and go away and, you know, you're going out there and it's raining and dirt's flowing into the wastewater system, which is going to flow into the pumps we now own and we have to repair. But in, in a lot of cases, and we've asked them, they've gone, when told them, they went out and put caps on it and they're, but it's a hard job for them too, trying to supervise, you know, 150 subs out there working at the same time.
And I don't think we're trying to pick on WCI by any means, that we want to be good partners with WCI. And the fact that we may not have been doing things the most efficient way in the past doesn't mean we continue to keep doing those things. And I think we've got to cover our liabilities for these types of situations. And I would hope that WCI would come to the table with us and say, look, we absolutely know where you're coming from. There's things that occur doing construction that may have downstream impacts to your system. Let's, let's be able to move forward. If you find something, we will fix it, uh, if it's within your, uh, within your liability.
And we had a meeting with staff, with Home Building and, and addressed those things. We have done that.
And they, they have a lot of the issues that we've brought up. They've been working diligently.
I think we're, you know, I think we're just trying to put a little pressure because we're trying to adjust our procedures to follow our policy.
Well, we're talking about maintenance. That's what the issue is here, guys.
Correct.
It's a maintenance issue. It's not a repair, the repair season.
If we can recoup the maintenance, then.
It's the maintenance issue is the issue.
Then I think we're fine, regardless of whether it's, you know, if, if Chris, if we've got a, uh, I can't remember what you said, flood or?
And if it's not a big deal, it's not going to be a big cost.
I mean, it's not personal.
I'm Rhonda Brewer with WCI. So I did also want to add to the conversation that from the time that we requested inspections to the time that it actually happened was 20 days. And we have in our business plan, we've got commitments to people to close homes this year. We're now at the beginning of December. Um, thankfully, we were able to do an inspection this past Monday and Tetra Tech generated a punch list of items. We have since performed that punch list with the exception of some lids that need to be changed out, which, so I am, I am respectfully requesting that we get our water meters and get on with the Department of Health in signing these forms so that we can make these commitments that we've made to these buyers to close these homes this year. We have a lead time on the Home Building side from the time that we get the water meters installed, they have to do additional work on their end. And I'm really, I'm really out of time. So we talked about, you know, needing approximately 10 meters so that we could, you know, move forward with this. We provide bonds to Gateway too, and the staff has seen that we're very responsive to any issues that Home Building creates, you know, at that time, but I'm, I'm really at a point where I need to get these meters.
Chris, are we prepared to help her with those 10 meters?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's, the only process is right now is the punch lists have gone back and forth and the, you know, final will come over to us. Recommendation is usually does Tetra Tech, okay, here's everything, sign them. And I, I would assume that would be happening in the next day or two.
Okay.
You know, it, it could take a week, you know, just the bureaucracy of it, but it's, uh, all in Tyler's hands at the moment, I think.
My hands right there.
Oh, okay, well.
Tyler has, Tyler has.
He has an electronic.
Yeah, I guess.
I just, I just want everybody to understand that December 31st is kind of a magical date for WCI. It isn't for us at all. And their books closed then, and I think anything that we can do to get these 10 meters installed and, uh, so, so that the permits and everything can be issued and, and they can sell these houses is, is, uh, should, should be a high priority for us.
Thank you, my honor. Okay.
Yep.
So what needs to be, what needs to be executed? Is it the operating entity?
Um, the Department of Health permits.
Okay.
With Lars system and the wastewater collection.
So, so perhaps what we need to do is, I don't like to do things this way, but have a board take a vote on becoming the operating entity for that line so we can install and then authorize the chairman to execute that. Because I really think that, because that is, because that, um, function is taking, the liability, the liability is on the district as a whole. I really think that needs to be happening at the, at the supervisor level. And that needs to be accepted and approved by the supervisors, not something that management is signing because it is exposing the district to the liability.
I have a second?
No.
Do I have a second?
I'll say, I'll say the motion.
Okay. I don't believe we should make a motion, um, because it's not on the agenda. So the residents do not have the ability to talk about this. So I don't believe that we should make the motion today. It should be put on the agenda next time.
But it, it's time sensitive though.
I know, but I still believe that it should be put on the agenda.
Only you can open it up in the audience.
Yeah, if the board wishes, the chairman, Madam Chairman may wish to, then ask any members of the public if they wish to. Uh, and I guess for clarification, April, what you're asking the board to take action on would not be accepting the conveyance or transfer of the lines via a bill of sale, but just accepting sort of like interim operational responsibility. Is that correct?
Right, and then also, I, I mean, also.
Right, is that, is that what, that, that's what's being requested?
Right, I mean.
Yeah, it's becoming the operating entity.
Right, but not owning them yet.
It's, we are assuming the liability for the operation of that part of the utility, which is a burden placed on the district as a whole. So I think it should be appropriately approved and.
No, no, but what I'm saying is we are not accepting the conveyance of those facilities at this time. Bill of sale or anything like that, that's not what we recommend.
Right, just operate in.
Okay, I'm trying to make sure it's clear.
And I will, I will share that, you know, ever since, I mean, basically, it's always been the operation manager who is signing these forms throughout the time period, you know, and so we have to have the signature here and then we have to get the signature from LCU because LCU supplies your water and accepts your sewer. So that's, that's another portion of the puzzle. So the thing is, is like, in terms of Matarita, Three, Four, Casella, you know, Scott Connell, the previous manager was the one who signed those forms.
And I think, I think that what our operations manager is asking is that in order for her to feel comfortable signing those documents, she wants to hear the board's support of that. And I think that's why she's asking for a motion.
And let me just say, I, I think that April gave a, an impassioned discussion for kind of a policy shift. And I understand what she said and why she said it.
Not a shift in policy.
But, but what, I think we're saying is, practice or policy, that we've been proceeding down a path under prior interpretations, then, you know, we're too far down that road and business damages can occur. We're trying hard not to do that. So I think it's more of a staff direction understanding. We may have permit manual interpretations or policy changes, you know, on a going forward basis, but we need to make sure we continue down the path we're on. And I don't think it violates any of the district rules.
Does anyone in the public have a comment that they'd like to make at this time on this?
If they're still awake.
I know. Then I will ask for. I'd like the motion to be read again. We are advising our operations manager to sign the documents that are needed to put this section of pipe online for us to take over the operations and.
Yeah, yeah, for 10, uh, 10 meters to be placed for the lines to be, yeah. Yeah, we accept the operating responsibility for that segment of line necessary for these 10 meters to be installed.
Solely for this?
Solely for these 10.
Solely for this 10.
Yes. Can that be well defined, John?
Well, I don't know if it's exactly 10.
Okay.
So it could be, you know.
But I'm, I'm assuming it's a.
You're making things more difficult.
I'm assuming it's, I'm assuming it's a line on a map or it's something that identifies what we're, we're doing here. What, April, what are you signing?
It's an, it's an operating entity of.
But it's got to describe something.
Yeah, from station to station or on your feet or.
Right, it's basically, uh, it's, it's a certification, it's a partial certification, but in this case, it's actually the entire system because the, all the water main is being looped within the community. That helps with the maintenance of the water and stuff like that. We want all the water turned on and the 10 houses that we have are on two different lift stations within that community.
So basically, you're asking us to take over the maintenance and operation of the section that's going to loop the entire system?
Yes.
We don't want to restrict the homes.
Yes, that was my question.
Because that'll.
Okay.
The more homes we have, the better we are.
That'd be better, that's better, yes.
And so that you are understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. Kathy? May I ask one more question? Yes. Ms. White? Yes. Do you feel comfortable signing these? This is what I want to know. Do you feel comfortable yourself?
Yes, I, I am fine with the, with the supervisors directing me to sign the form. I'm, my issue isn't about who signs the form. My issue is that when the district takes on liability as a whole, the entire burden is placed on the taxpayers, that that approval should come from the supervisor level, not within management.
And we understand that, and I think our, our attorney has advised us how if there is any costs associated with taking on this responsibility, that we can look toward the developer.
For any damages that occurred to the system by the developer, yeah.
Right, and part, part of the issue with, with that though is as far as it's finding the damage and it's, it's, and I, and I think, I think WCI, again, has been very responsive with those identified issues and fixing them. Or maybe we don't know about issues and they go in and fix them anyway. It's more of that liability. It's more of the issue of the things that has happened out there that we don't know about, I think is more burdensome than the things that we do know about. And only, the only things that we can bill for are the things that we can identify. And in order to identify those issues, we have to have inspection. We have to have our people on the ground out there identifying them. So now we're rolling in costs that has become, we've all discussed it, WCI and us have, have discussed it as far as those inspections. And we've been trying to back out to, you know, every other week or, um, so, but once, once we do certain things and accept them, we won't have the, that ability, you know.
And one of the points of clarification is, it's really not all taxpayers, it's the customers of the district service system that are paying for it. I mean, they are residents of the district or property owners, but it's the, you, those who utilize the water and sewer system that be paying for it.
I want to make sure, Chris and Danny, we have punch list, everything we're talking about accepting and we're satisfied with that.
Can we simply just make the motion contingent upon our review of, of the documents and in their completion of the, any punch list items?
I, I could, I could agree with that. I, I just do not want to sign off if the punch list has not been, been done on this. And everything that we talked about, because at first I was talking about 10, that could be, uh, house, two blocks with 10 houses. Now we're talking about looped lines, two pump stations, four mains. I don't have any problem with that if it's all been tested and it's all been accepted.
Yeah, everything's been tested as far as, as that goes. The punch list items are, you know, minor issues from what I understand.
I don't want to circumvent the due diligence that we're doing now.
I'm satisfied then.
Yeah, okay. I think we're good.
I'm satisfied.
The only thing that I would ask before I call the question is that you keep track of any cost incurred. So, we have the availability to backfill.
Especially if we see we're having issues. So, we know what they are in anticipation of this in the future.
Exactly.
Because it sounds like we don't have a real good track record.
I know. So, I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Aye.
4-1, let the record show that. Kathy Clarity was opposed. Okay. Now, I guess we can actually get the actual agenda.
Up next is Eric Rosen, Gateway Dog Park Issues.
Thank you very much. It's good to see our community group in action. So, as a resident. We're big users of the dog park and many people are. And we found a number of issues. And a couple of months ago, the locks fell into disrepair and they were just left disrepaired. And then it wasn't until I spoke with you, I guess, April, the other day, when I brought it to your attention, and you mentioned the parts and all that kind of stuff. And then the next thing I saw, and we discussed the liability and dogs, the parks closed. No notification or anything, it's just closed. And, and that was very frustrating to us and to a lot of users who drive down and then it's closed. You know, I think that a resolution until the system can be repaired, requesting the dog park be opened. And in addition, I think that you need to get backup parts. And I asked also for an alternate resolution if this couldn't be, if the lock thing didn't work, maybe padlock or something else so we could use it. There are many, many people that use the park. And I know my dog and many others, and maybe this is for dog lovers, they really, it's an important part of their day, an important part of their activity. And we've met many, many people coming, being new to the community. And it's become sort of, becomes almost a social thing, too. And I'm just asking that more attention be paid and get this fixed so that we can use the park. And for it to be out of repair for two months and no discussion, nothing. I mean, we get no information. I don't know how you communicate the stuff or not. But the thing is, yesterday, we were ready to go to the park and someone sent us a picture. Dog park closed. So, had plenty of time to make signs that it was closed and padlock it. And, and so now, I don't know what the resolution is. And I think it's very, again, I'm hoping I'm bringing it to your attention, because I think it's, it's a small thing to, you know, in the whole thing. But we're members of the community, we're members of Gateway, and very proud of it. It's been a beautiful place to be. But the dog park was very important to us when we moved here, because we've had dogs for, you know, forever and ever, and they need exercise. So, I'm just asking somehow that some attention or preparations be made so that it can be used. And if it's broken, to have backup parts instead of waiting for, I know April mentioned to me about, you know, vendors and problems with that. Well, there are a lot of vendors. And, you know, again, I guess the thing is, if you have backup parts, then it's a lot easier to, you know, to get it done. So, that's all I wanted to say. We just want attention to it so that we can use it. We appreciate it. It's a great place for our dogs and the people, you know. And, and I think we take very good care of it. And we're very careful with everything that we do. So, anything you can do to speed up the process, we'd really appreciate it. And I think I speak for a number of other people.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Steven?
Yes, the last one is Phil Measy. He wants to discuss the November report from P-PAC.
My apologies. You, I'm kind of preempting your review of the minutes from the October meeting of the P-PAC. Unfortunately, because of the schedule we're on, what happens is by the time we approve our minutes and you get them, it's a couple of months later. And so normally, we send you a report of the activities of...
Do you want these called, right?
Of P-PAC, yeah. Oh, do you have copies? Good. Yeah, thanks, Phil. And I missed the deadline because of the Thanksgiving vacation. So, I'm here to, you'll have copies of this. And I just want to hit the highlights, because there's one place where we need your approval. And that is that we are, and we've reported this in a couple of past meetings, we are replacing our gate access system, which is, the old system was called Capture. The new one is called Dwelling Live. And Dwelling Live is going to give us a more, more efficient entry to the gate. It will, it will make things move along faster, and it will be better for, ultimately better for the residents coming in and out of the gate. But in order to implement the Dwelling Live system, we've got to, we've got to do an educational and informational effort with the residents. And to start the information or the educational process and the informational process, we need to send, have a mailing to all the residents that includes a lot of materials about the system, as well as a key code that they will need to enter the system.
So, I assume this is in your budget?
This is not in our budget. That's the reason we're coming to you. If it were in our budget, we could just go ahead and do it. So, we are, what we are requesting is for an amount not to exceed $2,000 to do this mailing. We have room, other places in our budget to cover it. So, it's, it's not a problem from a total budget perspective.
Phil, move.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Okay. The other thing that I'd like to just mention briefly is, on October 25th, Pelican Preserve, interested parties, as well as representatives of the CDD staff, met with Richard Molton, who is the interim director of Public Works for the city of Fort Myers, to talk about the process we have to go through as far as traffic regulation and traffic signs and approving things for the, within Pelican Preserve. And I think we got that pretty well straightened out. We are going to be coming forward to you with some recommendations with regard to traffic regulation and traffic signs and road markings. We're not prepared to do that yet, because what we want to do is to conduct the traffic study that the board directed us to do. And so, we have developed specifications for that traffic study, and we hope to undertake it in a short time. It will probably be done by Johnson Engineering, because they owe us some services. And we're going to take advantage of that in order to do the traffic study. So, we have already submitted the specifications to Tetra Tech to carry forward to Johnson Engineering. And so, we hope to get that underway. And I just wanted to inform you that that process is underway. We're not going to present you with any recommendations until that is completed.
Okay. Steve, go ahead.
Can I ask a little question?
Yeah.
This is trying to get knowledge of, maybe the other three here are far superior on this. I noticed looking at Preto and Pastoya and Lipa, and I'm assuming Lipa's accurate, at least on this, the roads in Pelican continue to be coming to the, to the district. Is it going to be that Pelican is going to be like Stony Brook when we're done, that the roads are all under the district as opposed to the Master Association? Or what, I guess my question is, is if the Master Association wants the roads and to avoid a huge turnover in the future, why isn't, why aren't the roads being turned over as we go?
Well, they are, we are, the roads are being turned over kind of as we go, because right now, you've got the, the issue of the tract L roads in Cypress Grove to be turned over.
This is a different tract L. We had tract 9 a while ago, I guess.
Yes.
Tract 9.
And that, that process is still moving forward, as far as we know. And Tony can perhaps address this better than I can.
I just didn't understand why the intermediary was to come through the CDD only to go to the Master Association.
Well, ultimately, I think we believe that since the, the CDD already has the roads in what we call Old Pelican Preserve without getting to Cypress Grove, it seems to make sense to us to take on the Cypress Grove roads as well and to have a whole package, which will ultimately be turned over to the HOA. The other issue of turning them over to the HOA at this point is the HOA is controlled by WCI. And so, as a consequence, we're concerned that WCI would...
That answered the question.
Yeah. We, we don't want, we don't want to have them approving their own turnover.
Got you, got you, got you.
Madam Chairman, maybe just a point of clarification. I think from the standpoint of the term used, turnover from the district to...
Conveyance.
To the association, it's not conveyed. It's that it's under the operating agreement.
Yeah.
The district will still own the roads. But assuming that, that operation and maintenance agreement continues on.
Right.
The property owners, so master, will maintain and operate on behalf of the district.
That's correct.
But just to make sure that the use, use of the term turnover, it sounds like a conveyance or DDoD. Which is not what we're talking about.
But I think, Ed, then I think that answered your question.
That's it. Thank you.
Philip, you'll stay right there. Next is P-PAC. So, did anybody have any questions from the minutes from the P-PAC October meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the Stony Brook October minutes. Anybody have any questions from that? Or do you have anything you want to add?
Joe McCulker from Stony Brook Advisory Committee. I just want to congratulate the new members of the board and looking forward to working with you fellows and ladies. Do we have any questions? Do you have any, any questions? The only issue we really talked about of any substance was doing painting on the main road as well as the side roads for stop signs, crosswalks and whatnot. We did get bids in the following month, which you, we have, it's old news to us, but it's not to you yet. And I was unable to meet the do not exceed. So, that's going to come up again in the next meeting. And that's about the only issue here that I can really see you might have a question about.
Mark, I do have one. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, because it's going to be at another subject later, but it's Stony Brook. What you're finding, Extreme Divers is finding, and we saw in our book, and what we saw in 2013 when we were doing the testing, I didn't see it to that nature, but I can, I can just guess and imagine what it is. My question is, Lennar is our friends that did all this. We have no ASBILs from Lennar on that project. What do we have, Tony, in the way of arm twisting or other alternatives available to clean this up? They walked away, leaving, leaving us a hole in a bag.
The timeframe is long since run.
Long since done. So, it's an IOU.
It's an Eaton, it's an Eaton smart.
The timeframe is, the timeframe is...
That should have limited.
The statute of repos is passed.
Our problem is, we didn't do, we didn't do our due diligence on checking this stuff and we got...
That's why I applaud staff for doing some of the due diligence we're doing today, because we've missed things in the past.
It is off-subject, but I agree tremendously with you. That, don't forget, you know, one of the big issues, if you recall, was that flowway leaving Stony Brook. And that was never inspected, no food, boots on the ground. And it was never constructed to the design. No ASBIL was ever provided. And the amount of land that was left to build that made it impossible to build it to the standards. And we got stuck in the middle of that, but I don't want to get on that path. But I commend you for being diligent about this other issue.
We're stuck on that, too, because we don't have an access to that.
Yeah, there's, there were no ASBILs, nothing, just a letter saying that it was substantially built to the design, which was not correct.
I trust that one of these days, Lennar will be back before this group. That will be a fun day.
Don't hold your breath.
Real quick, I just want to mention...
That's your IOU.
That's the IOU.
It's an opinion.
Ed, did you, do you not find at least the drainage pipes that go under Pebble Brook are pretty accurate and as proposed? And then I understand that as you get to the side roads, that's where the problem is?
Well, a lot of it was where your main, oh, then the shaved-off pipes, the mitered-in sections. What they did is, like a lot of construction down here, they go too dag-on fast. They put it in, the water came up in the lake, they forgot to put down the rip wrap on both sides of it, like the plans called for. So, a guy comes up with a 10-ton truckload of 6-inch rip wrap, dumps it, thinking he's hitting the left side or the right side of the pipe. And what does he do? Puts it in the middle of the pipe. And it just gets worse and worse. Then that creates the backup. But not only that, the, the issue of the ingress and egress on that easement for, Stony Brook is just a, it's a mess. And then the last one is, we still do not have a, an idea of how the piping works up there in your recreational area. We looked for that pipe until we blew in the face, couldn't find it.
All I can say is, I'm not surprised. And we're still suing them over some of our own assets and this is...
We have no idea where the pipe is at. None.
Unfortunately, I can't help you with that. I have no idea.
Get your shovel, Joe. You need to get to work.
Any other questions about the Stony Brook?
All right. 5A, financial reports. You going to have any questions on the financial report?
No, um, would you ask Steven if he had anything to say for it?
I will.
Sure. I think really the, this is your first month, so there's not a whole lot of activity.
Right.
The only thing I did want to point out in terms of your water irrigation and sewer revenue, overall for the month, you were just about $200 over budget. So, you're pretty close to your budget. So, that's a, it's a good first sign.
Kind of scary, isn't it?
Yeah, but it is interesting to see that. And, and, you know, as we talk a little bit more, we get to utility rates and things like that. I just kind of wanted to mention that.
Steven, we're going to be talking about later on, that true-up issue and that going to 301. Is that on the 301 per thousand on the water side?
That's wastewater.
That's wastewater?
That's wastewater.
That's wastewater. Is that, what impact is that, what is it currently?
Current, well, I think it was 2.6.
$2.60 per thousand?
Yeah.
So, that's a significant increase.
Yeah. And one of the things that I do want to mention that I will be requesting to bring to the board for the next meeting is, we completed our year-end, it's a, it's a revenue efficiency report that we have to do. And as a part of that, I look at 2016, but I also look at the next couple of years. So, I've done a preliminary report. I want to bring that to the board to review. And there's discussions about a rate study. So, I think that all kind of fits in together, because I think you're definitely going to need a rate study. And I have updated that report to include the new fees and to put a higher increase on future rates, just in case.
I'd like to see one other thing, too. I've asked for it for years. I don't even know how simple or how difficult it's going to be. But everybody I have ever worked with does an analysis on a monthly basis of how much water you buy and how much water you sell. I'd like to see, how were we for 2016, which would, what ended October?
September 30th.
September 30th. Because I'd like to see for 2016, the 12, the readings. What was our water sold versus, what was the water loss?
Sure.
What are we at on that?
I think Chris had brought that up in the past, too.
We need to be knowing that stuff. And if we're going to have a rate study, he's certainly going to have to know it.
On the water end.
Yeah.
So, we can count that. We talked about that when Zinner was here.
Is that a, is that an additional cost?
Well, we'll pay for, we'll pay to put the equipment on the meter.
We don't know how much that is.
Um, no.
I don't think it's like...
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't discussed the logistics of that. But that was something that Zinner brought up, is that if we, if we had, if we could catch a read, our own read, on what that, what water we're bringing in.
And that's an indicator, too, of managed loss or...
And the other side of it is the irrigation, the reuse. I'd like the same thing.
Yeah.
Just see what we're selling versus what we're buying.
Can you take that action to get with Chris?
When you're running your own water plant and your own wastewater plant, you can disguise that loss. But not when you're buying it through a cash register. You're dead.
So, that's all I had.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on the financials? Okay, let's take a five-minute break before we get into the true-up.